This meeting is now in session. This is the, what date is it today? The nineteenth, November nineteenth session of the regular TAK City Council. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council is going to remain for just a moment for a silent prayer. You're welcome to join us if you'd like. Man, thank you. This wasn't on the agenda. What the? There wasn't any seven days notice about this. All right, this is not on the agenda. We just kind of decided to do this a little while ago. This is Chuck Gross. He's the commander of the TAK Veterans Association. And we have a special unveiling we did today. We've been working on this for two years, believe it or not. We were trying to get a depository for unserviceable United States flags. And we couldn't get any help from anybody trying to locate one. So we ended up taking our funds and buying the one out there, you see, out here by our case. And then as soon as we bought that, this came in. But it's okay because we needed two anyway. We want to have one here and we want to deposit this at the fire station on the other side. So Laura, you come up please too because, did you also help? We're going to give him credit too. Come on up here, John. So Laura and John are the local artists that did this. Now remember when we got this, this is your typical blue post office box. And when we got it, it was, looked like holy heck. And they cleaned it up, they, whatever you do, pressure washed it, whatever, I don't know. Whatever artists do to make things happen. Trade secret. And I just told them it had to have something on it that said, "Not for deposit of mail." But I wanted it to look kind of patriotic, you know? It is coming from the TAK Veterans Association. So I wanted it to look kind of patriotic. And this is what she came up with. If you want to unveil it. This is above and beyond what we had expected. It says, "The only thing we were supposed to be required to have," come on in. It had to say, "Not for US mail," and it couldn't say, and it had to say, "Warn US flag depository." So people won't come up and see this as a post office box and put mail in here. So the rules were, and then that's all I said to her. That's all it has to say, and after that, "Go for it." And this is what Laura's idea was, and also John's idea too. And like I said, above and beyond our expectations. So thank you very much. Do you want to say anything?
Just happy it's here. I'm excited about it. And I just think it looks beautiful too. Yep, I'm excited.
Okay, so this will be over at the other police, at the fire station sometime this week. And I don't know, we're going to, we either have to bolt it to the concrete or we have to put a concrete block around it. So we're going to put a concrete pad there. So if you have any worn flags, we've got one here and one on the other side of the lake now. Thank you very, very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris on planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a public hearing for two items. We'll have it kind of split between the two. The first item is an amendment to our ordinance 77, the zoning code, to add new Article 17, which would allow small wireless facilities as a permitted use in the public right-of-way and utility easements. The background behind that is there's a new FCC rule that will allow telecommunications operators, carriers, to install what they call small wireless facilities in municipals, municipalities. And if there's no existing municipality ordinance in place that guides aesthetics, fees, and things like that, then the FCC rule takes priority. And so the Municipal Association of South Carolina has drafted a, or worked with the telecommunications industry and the municipalities to add that. So if there's anyone who has any public comment, question on that ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address. All right, there being none, we'll move to the second item. The second item is a rezoning of approximately 1.11 acres identified as tax map 654-0000-013 from AGC in the county to park in the city. And this is a parcel of land already owned by the city that will become part of Cotaba Park, so right off New Gray Rock Road. If there's any public comment or questions on that item, please come to the podium, state your name and address. All right, thank you, there being none. Commissioners, is there any comment on either of those items? Council, is there any comment or question on any of those items?
Any questions? Fairly straightforward.
All right, thank you. We will close the public hearing.
Thank you, and we'll give you a moment to.
We'll move on out of your way.
Thanks for coming in. Chris, do you have to go back and vote or anything? Or you, yes, okay. So if I see you here, I'll know where to move on, but otherwise, we'll just keep on going. Okay? Okay, I'll be back. All right, item number two, special presentation, the TAK Police Department presentation. I will turn it over to Chief.
Mayor, council, city manager, and TAK citizens, I wanted to take a moment to recognize several businesses and people in the community who have vested a great deal in what TAK police believe is the crown jewel of the police department. That's Camp Cadet. As most of you know, TAK Police Department operate a nonprofit camp called Camp Cadet. The camp was started in June 2015. The camp is a way for fifth, sixth, and seventh graders to interact with TAK police and fire, learning about the jobs they do daily while in a relaxed environment. We teach the campers about leadership, good choices, and positive relationships. The camp is 100% free to the campers. Over the week they attend, all the funds raised throughout the year are strictly from donations. As I've said earlier, this camp builds positive relationships while fighting the mainstream media narrative. Since the camp's inception, we've had to scrape beg and borrow to keep the camp operational from donations. This year, thanks to Hydro Hot Tubbs and Pools, who I'll be calling up in a minute, for becoming our corporate sponsor. The camp is in the best shape we've been since its inception. We no longer have the constant anxiety of how we're going to sustain the camp. I would also like to recognize Muscle Factory for their becoming a silver sponsor with the Camp Cadet at the golf tournament. So as we give these awards in the next second, please remember, as I'm speaking, as a Camp Cadet board member, please support local business and help those who help the community. First, I'd like to call up Will Caddell from Muscle Factory. Caldwell, sorry. That's what happens, my glasses need to be bigger, so. Will, we want to thank you very much for everything that you did for the camp. It means a lot and what you're doing for the kids in the community. Thank you very much for this. Next up, I'd like to call Hydro Hot Tubbs and Pools, call Rod McLean, Jason Jones, Peter Steiner, and Clay Norman. Hopefully, I got all those right, I don't know. Okay, well, thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you for what you've done for Camp Cadet. It means the world, and I hope that everybody here goes out and buys a hot tub, so.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, well, maybe I should because I have the weed. All right. I've got a couple of proclamations to read. We'll start with the Arbor Day. This is always a good exercise in showing my skills from my public school education for reading proclamations. We'll start with the Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the city of TAK celebrates 28 years as a Tree City USA, which recognizes the value of trees to the community and has adopted the act of celebrating the first Friday in December as Arbor Day. Whereas trees contribute to the aesthetics of our community and when properly cared for, increase property values and beautify our neighborhoods. Whereas trees enhance the livability of our city through the filtering of storm water and air pollution. And whereas it is the purpose of this proclamation on this day throughout the state of South Carolina to encourage planting trees and to follow the actions of J. Sterling Morton in 1872. And I'm going to Google that, see who that is. Now therefore, we, the mayor and council of the city of TAK, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 7th, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of TAK, South Carolina, and urge all residents of the city to observe Arbor Day by attending the Arbor Day ceremonies on Friday, December 7th at 1:00 PM at the clubhouse parking lot in honor of former mayor Bob Runde and former councilman James Dervay, dated this 19th day of November 2018. I'm giving this to Tim, the tree man. Who is our arborist. And before I start reading this, can I have Fred and Ellen Wingate come up? You must be Fred.
Yes, sir.
I'm going on a limb there. Ellen, and your two children? All right, this is a proclamation for epilepsy awareness month. Whereas epilepsy is the most common serious brain disorder worldwide with no age, racial, social class, national, or geographic boundaries, whereas there are 3.4 million people in the US living with epilepsy. We know that it is the underlying tendency of the brain to produce seizures, which are sudden abnormal bursts of electrical energy that disrupt brain function. Whereas we further know that in, over a lifetime, one in 10 people will have a seizure, seizure, and one in 26 will be diagnosed with epilepsy. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and council do hereby declare November as epilepsy awareness month in the city of TAK in an effort to promote awareness and understanding, to advocate for laws that matter to people with epilepsy, and to encourage funding for epilepsy research. Dated this 19th day of November 2018, signed David L. O'Neil, Mayor, City of TAK, South
I'll just say really quick, we've been on this journey with our son Logan for about 10 years. And what we've realized is it's totally not about us. We are blessed to be able to have a voice because it's okay for us to talk about Logan's seizures. But there are so many people right here in this community that either can't have a voice or they're just not able to voice. So we just thank you because this gives them a voice too.
Item number three, public comments. Let's see who signed up for public comment. Hope McBride signed up, and she wants to talk about probably Lions Club, right? I'm just going out on a limb here again here. Thank you, just state your name and your address.
Hope McBride, 2149.
And your blood type.
I wore this for Charlie.
That's not orange.
I know.
Oh, I got you. I got you. See, I'm a little slow sometimes.
As we all know, you know, TAK Lions Club is extremely busy in the city of TAK, not just with kinds of fundraisers you see, but with service projects that we do. One thing I want to say right up front is, we can't do that without the city, without the women's club, without mom's club, without anybody that's willing to help us, because we're only 53 people. So thank you to everybody that helps the Lions Club. But on behalf of the TAK Lions Club, I'd like to specifically thank everyone who worked so hard to make the Fall Festival a success for the community and particularly for the Lions Club. We had the children's parade, which, you know, Joey was just awesome in helping us with the children's parade, with the dunk tank, with getting things set up properly. And whenever we needed anything during the day, Jim would just call Joey and it was done. We want to thank the fire department who filled the dunk tank in the morning with nice warm water that was. It could have been worse, that truck was inside the bay overnight. And those who volunteered to be dunked. We have Mayor Protram Heather, Heather, who was the last and had the coldest, and I think the dirtiest, water. Mayor David O'Neil, who had the perfect face shot in one of the pictures, and I think that was probably thanks to Cliff Nichols.
I warmed up the water for her, by the way.
You warmed up the water, yes. But you kept, I understand you kept looking for your hat, so I'm not too sure what that was. To Charlie Fundenberg for being dunked and complaining about cold water before you ever got in it. But I have to say, I saw Charlie walking around all day long in his bathing suit and a tee shirt. So he was ready for that dunk tank when it came, besides it was raining, so it was a perfect thing to wear. And councilman and lion Gus, who had a very stunning outfit. It was just gorgeous. He looked like a distraught candy cane, Jim's words. But you also made the state lions newspaper, so the whole state saw him in his best. The funds that we raise, and we did raise almost $600 in spite of the weather and things to all of you. The funds that were raised go to many, many programs that Lions Club undertakes, such as the vision screening program. We did 600 children today at Sugar Creek and had about 11% referral rate, so that's well worth it. The reading action program, and other programs such as Easter egg hunt that we do, and the children's parade that we mentioned. And I want to mention that our next activity is the senior citizens' Christmas party that is to be held the first Monday and Tuesday of December. And it's up at Grace Presbyterian Church. It's the, it's from 1:30 to 3:30. And it basically, we have seniors from all over York County that aren't going to have any other Christmas. They're in nursing homes, they live by themselves. So I want to encourage anybody that knows somebody that lives alone, might be able to benefit from just getting out for a couple of hours, have them give me a call and see if you can get them up there. Tuesday is the best day, Monday is really pretty full.
Go ahead, we'll give you a little bit.
Okay, I'm almost done. But anyway, this is going to be some of their only day. And I guess that really, I just want to say thank you again, and I love the partnership that we have.
Yeah, well, thank you and Jim for everything you do. We couldn't do the Fall Festival without your assistance and really. And I was just wondering, are we going to be able to dunk any seniors on?
No.
I'm done with dunking for a while.
But thank you all.
Thank you very much, really. You and Jim, thanks for everything you do. Do we have any other public comments? Rob is going to come up and talk to us from the York County.
I'm Rob Youngblood, York County Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Let me see, slideshow.
Mayor and councilpeople, thanks for this opportunity. I'm here just to remind you of something that's also happening, another thing that's happening on December 7th, in addition to your Arbor Day celebration, is York County Day. And I want to thank you, as was previously thanked, for the partnership you have with the chambers. And as I was here the last time to talk about impact fees with you guys, even though that was approved, it was clear that your thoughts and care were with the businesses that are in this community.
Absolutely.
Knowing that the businesses provide tax base and important, very important to this community and the quality of life. So we're going to run through very quickly, York County Day happens for the 32nd time this year on December 7th. York County Day, a little bit about the background. It was first introduced in 1988. It was the first county day that was celebrated in the state house for a number of years. And the purpose was to come together, to talk about the needs and what's going, what's going well here in York County and all the municipalities, including TAK. But we found out, or often heard, that the state legislature was sometimes confused associating us as part of North Carolina, specifically the Charlotte region. Now, it's nothing wrong with Charlotte. Many of us have family with jobs there, and they drive our economy to a great extent. But there's too much, too many important things and too many needs in York County and TAK that need to be attended to that are separate from Charlotte. The event progressed, it started as a one-day breakfast or luncheon. It evolved into a full-day event, and over the years, the three chambers got together. And back when there were six chambers, the TAK area chamber was involved as well. But it became a day-long event focused on specific statewide business issues that also affected us locally. Through the involvement, and again, this partnership and sponsorship of folks like you all, we've been able to grow the importance of the event and the impact of the event. Atrium Health is our presenting sponsor, and the city of TAK has sponsored for a number of years. We appreciate that very much. We've had a lot of changes with the event. Several other counties started doing their own day at the state capitol, and it became some competition. And our format became a little repetitious. We found we were doing similar things every year, so we wanted to change that up. And so what we did is to, Representative State, State Representative Ray Felder decided to bring folks here, something that had been popular and done well in Hilton Head. Now, we don't have a beach like Hilton Head does, but we feel like we had enough here to invite and entice legislators to come here and see themselves in person what was going on. What this did was remain true to our original goal of talking about the exciting and good things happening here, but still outlining the challenges, and that's what our plan is. And this started, our first year coming back to York County, having legislators come here, was last year with the BMX World Championship in Rock Hill. And this is going to continue until this year, which is actually the 31st year, I said 32 earlier. We're going to remain in York County in this area, this specific area, and hold York County Day as part of Carolin's Winter Fest, again, on December 7th. I think your Arbor Day activities are one, around lunchtime. Our events will start around 2:00 or 2:30, so it should be time for everybody that wants to participate in both. Our plan for this year are to double our number of legislators that come to this area. We had about 15 last year. We already have 15 signed up for this year, so we think we're well on our way with that. 350 total participants will be in Harmony Hall on the grounds of Carolin's. The things that we do will be before the event starts, before actually the Winter Fest activities start. Legislators and guests and participants will come, and I have a legislative reception, get to welcome and host our legislators, and then we'll participate in the Winter Fest activities from there. Of course, Carolin's is our site for that, and they are the highly touted festival and only gated theme park in both Carolinas. I want to just thank you for your, you've endorsed this for years and participated, and we appreciate that. And I assume TAK is participating this year, and we thank you for that as well. I look forward to seeing you there. I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are.
Are there any questions from the council? Thanks, Rob.
Rob, hey, Rob, I have a question. They, it opens, is it, does it open for the public, or is that just families of, at 5 o'clock or 4:30?
Welcome to the general public at 5:30.
5:30, okay.
Our events are tree lighting with the governor.
Right.
The reception and the other things that we'll do will happen before that, and we'll finish up around 5:00.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rob. Item number four on the agenda is approval of minutes. Council, you've all seen the minutes that were sent to you. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, seeing none, it stands as published. Item number five, committee reports. First, the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, well, mine will both be quick. Both the Economic Development Committee and the TAK Forever Foundation are still fairly in their infancy. So for economic development, they did develop a mission statement. I'll read that for you quickly. It is "Work to promote and encourage the development of business to complement the true spirit and character of TAK." So I think that is a good encompassing message for, for the committee and what their plans are. They discussed updates to the Glennon Center. Many of you have seen that there's new carpet upstairs, as well as over in the Shore Club. Paint is going in this week. We're updating the sound system upstairs. So because we are now the premier event facility in York County, we're the largest, with the closure of the Baxter Hood Center at York Tech, the Glennon Center is now one of the premier facilities. The only other one is the Marriott over near Kingsley. So we're trying to boost that and any events that are held, obviously, in the Glennon Center, bring money into the city, bring age tax dollars, those kinds of things, which can only help us. So continuing to market that. And then they also just discussed the monthly company profile. So starting, I believe, early next year, they're going to highlight a company every month, or a business, a local business in TAK. And then this wasn't on their agenda, but I'm just adding, November 24th is shop local, so I would encourage everybody to shop local here in TAK.
All right, did you just do A and C? Okay, I'll go to B then. Planning Commission.
All right. Well, the Planning Commission met this month on the first Monday of every month, as they usually do. So we meet here in this room, starting at 6:30. So I encourage you all to mark your calendars and come and attend, especially after you hear about the awesome things we talked about this past week, or sorry, this past meeting. So I just want to give a shout out to new commissioners Thompson and Forbes for completing their orientation training. So that's a big deal. It takes several different sessions that they have to go to and spend several hours of time. So completing that is really great, and so congratulations to them. In terms of regular meeting agenda items, we talked about a couple of things that are on the agenda this evening that we will be voting on, I believe. One, the small wireless facilities, and then the rezoning and annexation of the property that will be incorporated into Cotaba Park. We also discussed the process for the comprehensive master plan update, which is forthcoming. So just a couple of notes on that, which is important for council to know. One is that focus groups will meet in April, June, and probably September of next year. So I anticipate that you will be asked to participate in that, and we would want your feedback in doing so. And then in November, December of 2019, there will be the, the public hearing of the master plan update, and then also adoption by city council. So it'll move quick throughout the year, but it's really important document to help guide what happens within our, within our jurisdiction. So please pay attention, and if you're interested in participating, I guess let Susan know or let me know, and I can get you connected with the right folks. We also discussed the PDD development, the Starting Point Checklist for Staff. We talked about, and then we talked about the Trails Master Plan. We talked about, and, and then we talked about the Trails Master Plan. Uh, we, we gave an update for the new commissioners, and then we had a lot of discussion, actually, about the, uh, the Trails Master Plan that's in development. Significant concerns were raised over pedestrian and biker safety. And so much that we had a lot of speakers come to the meeting, and, um, that was great to see their participation and their passion about trails and connectivity and, uh, complete streets. As a result of that conversation, the Planning Commission, uh, asked that us as city council, uh, consider a recommendation to, um, city staff to begin the process of, um, understanding what the process, the requirements, the costs associated with installing enhanced safety devices, uh, at the pedestrian crossings on TUK Drive. So, um, there's a lot of traffic, uh, especially at, at times where you have a lot of students crossing. I know that it's hard to see when folks are crossing those crosswalks on TUK Drive because of the curves, because of the trees. And we're at a point in time where, um, we realize that it, it is a state-maintained road. However, we would like to, um, officially or formally request that, um, city staff start looking at what the process, what it would take, um, and how we can make that happen to make sure that, um, our pedestrians stay safe when they're crossing, um, to get to the various areas of our city.
So, when you say enhanced, uh, equipment, is that just simple as lights that would come up? Is there something else in those roads or something?
So, it could be, so, I think that we'd be looking for the, the city to look at light, some sort of lighting system that would light up the crosswalks when people were, um, there. Like, if it's a push button, and then the lights are activated and it flashes or it turns on. Uh, maybe there's a, a speaker that comes on that, um, you know, once someone presses the button, there's some sort of sensor that tells whether or not cars are coming, and then, um, you know, then can tell, say, you know, sometimes you hear them when you're at crosswalks and they're saying, "Wait, wait, wait." And then they allow you to go, right? So, something, looking into what are our options in terms of making those crosswalks more safe. Because it is really important and, and Mayor Protem and, and has had some conversations the past couple of weeks, well, probably more than that as well, um, about these crosswalks. And I think that they come up a lot in terms of, um, people just being concerned about the safety. And, um, we certainly want our, our folks and our kids to be safe when crossing the road. So, um, I don't know if council has any thoughts on that, but, uh, there's a recommendation from the Planning Commission that we, uh, direct city staff to start, um, going down that path to determine what our options are in making that happen.
I can tell you that we have made those formal requests of SC DOT, um, at least once or twice a year for the past probably seven, eight years, uh, including within the past 12 months. Uh, the last meeting I had, uh, actually included their head traffic engineers from Columbia. Uh, and it was for these flashing lights and things of that nature, and they said absolutely not. Be happy to schedule, uh, any type of meeting, um, that y'all would like to have, uh, ones or twos, what have you, and try to get those folks back together. But I have repeatedly asked this question, uh, of DOT since I was operations director and have been turned down every so.
So, we'll just have to take this on ourselves?
They, they have, they have said that, uh, if the street's ours, we do whatever we want to with it. But as long as it's a state-maintained road, they are not gonna allow for it.
Would they allow us to do something?
As long as we're willing to take on, uh, any and all liability associated with it. At the expense of it, yes, sir.
And that's a road that we might be getting turned over to us anyway?
Possibly.
And when, when are we gonna wanna hear about that?
The, uh, city manager's quarterly meeting we had, um, in October, uh, actually, the DOT director was there. Uh, and she said they are still working through all of those, uh, and we should hear something Q1 of, uh, 2019, if not Q2. On the, uh, the buyback program, yes, sir.
So, I might, I might mention and, and ask Mayor Protem to, to share a, a little bit as well. I know that she's been, um, she's had some folks from the community address this with her as well. But I think that there might be an opportunity for a, um, uh, an option to take that's, that's quick and affordable, that might provide some additional safety that we can go ahead and do without state approval, and I'll let her maybe share just a little bit about that. And then meanwhile, while, while we can implement something fast to keep our folks safe and make sure that, um, they're more visible when crossing the road, then perhaps then we can take, go down the path of, um, pushing back on the state and really understanding why, why we can't, or what can we do? If we can't do that, what can we do to make those crosswalks safer? I don't really like just hearing, "No, you're like, you can't," but because we, we certainly.
It was a very lengthy conversation. I'll be happy to provide all that, uh, to council. I don't know that, uh, right now is the time, but I can give you the litany of reasons why they told me no.
Sure, sure. So, perhaps there's other options that we can take that can make them safer. And so, I don't know, Heather, if you wanna add?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just mention it. I was gonna mention it in my council comments, but it seems that we're kind of discussing it now. So, um, a resident actually brought me the idea, um, and I've talked to a couple of the council members. I know I've talked to Charlie about it. Um, several cities in the area, um, do basically flag waving. It sounds silly, um, it's very simple. It's basically a reflective flag that are put on either side of the street, um, at the crosswalks. And as community members are walking across the street, they actually have a reflective flag that they wave, and then they stick it back in the slot on the other side. It's very low cost. Cities have had really great results with it. You know, there, there's some concern, what if the flags get stolen? What if, you know, there, there, I guess, a multitude of things could happen. But because we're so restricted with it being a state-operated road, what can we do? This is a very simple, low-cost, effective method that other communities have used. Davidson uses them, that's the closest one to us, um, that have worked. And so, you know, I thought maybe we could look at that as, as a possible option in the short term while we continue to have those conversations. I know, as, as Alicia had mentioned, I have had meetings with several residents about this. Um, it's a, pretty much an ongoing social media post daily, um, from somebody that I see out there. But I, I know that we are restricted, so what can we do? And that was just one idea that, that might be something simple and easy, so that was it.
Any other comments?
Uh, I guess just the, just so that we are sure that we received that recommendation, and if we wanna formally make that recommendation to staff to, to look at it, I think that, um, I'd just ask for.
Continue to look at options.
Yeah, yeah. Continue to look at options.
Can you go with that, or do you need a formal declaration? Okay, that's good enough.
Okay, cool. So, then that re.
Any comments from the audience about the crosswalks? We'll allow a few comments if you want. Saw a couple of people nodding earlier. All right, maybe not. Oh, you gotta step up here if you're gonna make a comment. And Norm, you weren't the one I was thinking of when I was saying. And we're limiting it to crosswalks, right? All right.
Norm Snyder, 1053 Silver Road Drive. Has there ever been someone struck in a crosswalk in TUK?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like that, short and sweet. Any other comments? All right, let's move to item 5C, which is the TUK Forever Foundation.
All right. So, TUK Forever also meets on the first Monday of every month, so it's the same time as planning. You can take your pick. It's a tough gamble, um, but we'd like you to come. Walt was there. We had, we had somebody representing us. So, this, this past meeting, we reviewed, we've recently hired a marketing firm to help with, um, the marketing of Kataba Park. Um, they've put together a, a little bit of material for us, but they also did a commercial for us that they put together, not a commercial, more like, yeah, promo, promo. So, it was, it was pretty good, um, but it wasn't exactly what we were looking for. It wasn't specifically towards the vision that we were trying to reach with Kataba Park. Um, we want to have this video kind of invoke a feeling, if, if that's what you can say. And so, it wasn't really doing that for us. And so, we've asked, um, Lemon's Marketing to kind of go back and, and re-review that and put something together that, that would do that. This video, this promo video would go out to eventually the public, but, um, primarily, um, business and corporate sponsorships at the beginning to hopefully attract money. That's the goal. They did talk more about the corporate sponsor event that's gonna be held in early March here at the Glennon Center, um, with business sponsors. So, we're working on planning that. It'll be an evening event. And other couple of things that they discussed, it was a pretty brief meeting. Park features, so what is included in the park. We have some new members on the committee. So, exactly what that entails in Kataba Park, and then the communication strategy. So, a lot of you might have seen, um, the post from the city that we have a sign out there now. It says Kataba Park, so we are moving in the right direction. But what does that look like, not just right now, but as we kind of move forward over the next year? How are we going to continue to, to communicate and market Kataba Park so that people aren't like, "Oh, it's coming. Oh, wait, nothing's happening." So, kind of keeping that momentum going throughout the next year until we, we get to groundbreaking. So, that's all I have.
Any comments from the council? Would the audience like to comment on anything? Ask any questions about the TUK Forever Foundation? Hearing none, let's move on to item 6, which is unfinished business. And the, uh, second reading for the ordinance to provide for the issuance of a waterworks and sewer system revenue parity bond necessary to construct a new elevated water storage tank. The city's water system needs an additional storage capacity due to the demand. Future users will place on the system. This 500,000 gallon tank will be located in Windhaven, and the developer has dedicated the land for the city to use. This tank was included in the CIP for impact fee rate study. Because this tank is only necessary due to new growth, the new growth will pay 100% of the expense of the debt to construct this tank through impact fees. The impact fees we just passed August 6th or 7th, whatever day it was. So, there will, there won't be any rate increase for this new tank. As the people move in and build houses, they pay for their permit, that permit money will pay for the water tank. Plain and simple as that. No rate increases for any new people coming in. Uh, any comments, questions? Does the public have any comments or questions before we entertain a motion? Seeing none, and, and I know last time we talked about this, this is the second reading. Some of the people on council, uh, maybe didn't have enough time to consider it. If you'd like to move this, if you'd like to table this, I'd consider that. You need more time to consider this. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to provide the issuance of a waterworks and sewer system parity bond in the amount not to exceed 1.255 million necessary to construct a 500,000 gallon elevated storage tank and other improvements necessary to connect that tank to the city's water system. Further move to award the construction of said tank to McLean Tank and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents and issue a notice to proceed with McLean Tank at such a time the council has given, given a favorable second reading of this ordinance and proceeds from the bond have been received by the city.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Heather Overman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. Any other questions before we consider it? Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Manager, do you mind just sharing with us what the, um, the elevated storage tank will look like? Will people be able to see it from the road, from their homes?
Yes. It, it's, uh, probably 300 to 400 yards off of Gold Hill Road into the Windhaven Development. It will look, uh, very, it will be the same style as the Shoreline Tank. Um, the paint design, uh, to be determined, um, but most certainly will include our name and, and logo, uh, to some degree on it, absolutely.
As will the new, the, the tank right out here is gonna be painted also.
This one's gonna be painted, uh, once that one's constructed, yes, sir. And this one will be painted to look like a golf ball.
This one will be painted to look like a golf ball. Very good. All right, ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Let's go to item 7, new business, the Planning Commission recommendation regarding the public hearing items. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In the matter of amendment to ordinance 77 to add new Article 17, small wireless facilities, the Planning Committee voted to recommend that the council proceed to first reading and adopt that ordinance.
Okay.
And in the matter of the second item, rezoning of approximately 1.1 acres, identified as tax map 654-000013 from AGC in the county to park in the city. Planning Commission voted to recommend that we do, in fact, change the zoning and, and adopt new zoning.
Thank you. Any questions to Chris? Thank you very much, Chris, and to the Planning Commission. We'll move right on to action, uh, let's see, item 7B. Introduction and first reading of an amendment to ordinance 77, small wireless facilities. The Planning Commission is proposing to amend the ordinance 77 zoning code to include Article 18 XVIIII. Put that in parentheses next time what it is. The only people that know Roman numerals are Super Bowl people, you know, they just, they receive, they go, "Oh, yeah, that's 55." Okay. To include Article 18, small wireless facilities. Small wireless facilities are gradually replacing large cell towers as technology advances. In order to prepare for this new technology, it is imperative that cities adopt regulations to provide a fair and equitable process for the deployment of small wireless facilities while ma, managing public rights of way in a manner that promotes the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. Everybody got that? Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, does the public have any questions or comments before we entertain a motion? That was Mike, just adjusting his glasses, not, uh, all right, Mike, we'll let you off on this time. All right, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to ordinance 77, small wireless facilities.
I have a motion from Ryan Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alicia Dash. Uh, we'll vote now. Any questions before we, gonna kill these questions? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Item 7C. Just down there, Wes. I couldn't get into it. All right, item 7C is introduction to first reading of an ordinance to annex approximately 1.11 acres, identified as TMS 654-00-00-013, and rezone it from AGC in the county to park in the city. This is land we already own. We're just rezoning it to park. And let me read that bottom part. These things are great. Hold on a second. The city is proposing to annex and rezone approximately 1.11 acres along New Gray Rock Road as an addition to the planned regional recreation facility, Kataba Park. This property was purchased by the city in June of 2018. The zoning district requested is park. The general purpose of the park rezoning district is to provide recreation and open space functions for a long-term benefit and enjoyment of the city residents and adjacent neighbors. The intent and future use of the property is to accommodate a better-aligned entrance access and allow for additional space for recreational fields in the, in Kataba Park. The subject property is in an area identified in the 2015-2025 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map as parks and recreation uses. So, one acre coming into the city that we already own, identified as a park. Do I have any questions, any comments?
So, you're saying we can't put four or five houses in there?
We are not gonna put four or five houses on that one acre.
Awesome.
Unless anybody would rather have houses. No houses. We've got one vote for no houses over here. No apartments, no, no residential dwellings whatsoever. This is gonna be a park. Any comments from the people who don't want this to be houses? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, members of council, motion to, to approve the introduction, first reading of an ordinance to annex approximately 1.11 acres identified as TMS number 654-000013 and rezone it from AGC in the county to park in the city.
I have a motion from Alicia Dash. Do I have a second? I have a second from Gus Machinus. Any other comments before we vote from anybody? No hands, no comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, no votes. It's unanimous. 6D, we're going to 6D. This is just a discussion. I'm sorry, 7D. Discussion of potential financial policy to transfer excess revenues to Capital Improvements Fund. Is that you, Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For probably, uh, the past two meetings, um, I believe, definitely at the last meeting, Ms. Dash had proffered the idea of, uh, creating a policy whereby any excess funds, uh, over and above, uh, the threshold that your financial policy states, uh, of the 25% of operational, uh, being in reserve, uh, being transferred over to this, uh, new Capital Improvements Fund, uh, that's being created this fiscal year, which we can absolutely do. The purpose of having this tonight is to get some guidance, uh, some feedback from council so that we can, uh, craft that document and bring it forward to you. council so that we can, uh, craft that document and bring it forward to you, whether you want to do it. Um, so, things we're looking for is, uh, ideas on, um, how much, uh, you know, is there a percentage, uh, over and above the 25% uh, each year that you would, you would, uh, like to be considered? Um, do you want to do this as a resolution? Do you want to do it as an ordinance, uh, and, and amendment to the code, um, like we did, you know, we had the financial policy was a resolution for, for some time. Um, and then a couple of years ago, two years ago, uh, actually moved that and, uh, adopted as part of our code. So, looking for that kind of feedback, uh, so that we can, uh, craft the appropriate document and bring it back to council for, uh, for your consideration. Um, so, really just looking for y'all's discussion and guidance there.
Now, is this general fund money?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, it's not?
It would be, it would be excess, excess revenues.
Impact fee, because that's already, impact fee is already?
Impact fee, uh, revenues have to go into their specific.
And not H-Tex.
That's correct.
So, we're just talking about the operation.
Just talking about excess revenues in your general fund. Yes, sir.
And are we expecting any excess revenues in the general fund?
Um, this coming year.
I mean, someday we might, but.
Our current fiscal year, um, we're, we're, uh, projecting to put, uh, approximately $190,000 into that capital improvements fund. Uh, now, as revenues come in throughout the course of the year and as, uh, as we manage the, uh, the expenditures, you've got a $68,000 operational contingency that would go into your, uh, into your cash reserves. Um, council could direct us at, at that point in time, let's put that over into the, let's add that to the capital improvements fund. Um, you know, tax revenues could come in higher, uh, building permits, uh, inspection fees, things like that could come in higher than projected. Um, you know, expenditures could come under, you know, things of that nature to where you end up with more than what was budgeted for as far as revenues over expenditures. Historically, those funds have always just gone into your, uh, into the, uh, fund balance, cash reserves. So, um, council has been very clear, um, and I, I know Ms. Dash has been very dope, uh, very vocal on reinvesting back into city infrastructure, city facilities, and things of that nature, some of which we've already started doing, um, as Ms. Overman alluded, alluded to earlier with reinvesting back into the Glennon Center and things of that nature. So, again, just looking for that guidance with those extra funds, you know, is it any and all extra funds, uh, over and above? Is it 2%, 5%, uh, any percentage or any dollars over the 25%? Just kind of looking for, yeah, I, for, what, what boundaries, uh, is council comfortable with? Um, you know, your other option is just take it on a, on a year-by-year basis, uh, if you want to, and just vote, hey, look, we've got extra revenues, you know, get it, let's get a report in September and year-end, let's, let's move that over there. Um, I think from what, from the conversations with Ms. Dash, I think you look for something a little bit more, not really optional, I, we need to be doing this and make that concentrated effort, which is absolutely, yeah, uh, absolutely fine. So, again, we want to put together the right document for you guys, um, so just looking for that guidance.
Charlie, I, I'm, my, my thought would be, I mean, if, if we can do it case by case, or we're at the end of the year, I mean, I, I don't know, if you, if you take your money out of the bank, you tend to spend it. And the needs are going to be different every year. I mean, if we have reserves, I'm all for the things that are happening right now. We needed to do the Glennon Center, and we've got some other projects that we've all talked about up here that, that need to be done. But, if you, if you mandate that it happens every year, then you're almost mandating that you're going to spend that money. And do we need to do that? That's, that's my only, that's my comment.
I have a question. What percentage for our bond rating, um, and I know Bob's not here, but what, what do we look like at over that 25% threshold? So, is it 27%? Is it 28%? What is a percentage that is going to continue to look good essentially to make us, you know what I mean?
The good, the good rule of thumb is, and that's why we went with, is that 25%.
Okay.
Right now, you're at about, you're at about 27%.
Okay.
Um, of your operational, now, obviously, as your operational budget grows, uh, every year is, you know, you're getting more milage in, you know, tax revenue in, you're getting more other revenues in. Obviously, you should also grow that reserve to go along with it.
Right.
But 25% is, that's a solid number to be at, and we're just north of that right now.
Okay.
Uh, now, at various times, that's our running average, I would say, through a 12-month period. Um, we are a cash business, basically, so there are parts of time of the year, like this, like this time of the year, where those cash reserves are being used for operations, uh, until the tax rolls come in in January, and then your reserve gets way above that 25%. And we operate just trying to keep as much in, in that, uh, in that fund and just pull out of it as, as we move along through the year. Um, so, but as you look at your 12-month running average, you're at about 26 and a half, 27% uh, on, on your reserves. So, it's, it's a good reserve. Now, uh, if, if our finance director was here, yeah, he would tell you he wants 35% in there. Bob likes a good, a good nest egg of good savings. Um, yeah, uh, I think Mr. Machinas is correct, that, yeah, you, in doing a policy like this, you're basically mandating that you're going to spend that money. And, and I don't want to put words in, in Ms. Dash's mouth, but I think that's kind of the point, is that we're, we're, we're not just going to keep sitting on the savings, we're going to reinvest that money back into facilities, infrastructure, back into the city, so.
Right.
Um, but it, it is a very valid point, so.
Yeah. I mean, our CIP list is, you know, a mile long, so, um, you know, we can, we can keep putting those projects off or we can actually finally tackle that list. Um, and I know it's a wish list and not a want list or a needs list necessarily, um, but those are things that, that need to happen, um, and, you know, we're at the point now where our infrastructure is kind of falling apart. We need to reinvest in the things that make Tika Kay what it is, our parks, um, and the infrastructure in those and things like that. So, um, you know, I, to your point, I, I understand what you're saying, so somewhere in the middle of what you're saying and an ordinance, so maybe it is a resolution, I don't know.
Okay. So, if, if I could talk, speak to this just a little bit, so what the, what the idea is, is when we're looking at our budget and we're planning for the future and we're looking at what all of our needs are throughout the community, we need to think about, how do we fund these significant capital investment projects that have high dollar price tags along with them? So, as we're thinking about and we're looking at the budget and we're trying to strategize, where, what's the best way to use taxpayer money? Where can we get, um, the most bang for our buck? Where does the community really want us to spend our money? Uh, when it comes to thing, those, those large ticket items, we typically or generally have to look to taking on more debt in order to afford to do those things. So, what this is, or what, what I'm suggesting we consider and discuss and come up with some direction for Charlie, is we consider, um, if, if at year-end there are operational savings or personal services savings from that year, you, once we fully fund our reserve fund, you take anything extra, or maybe it's, you know, maybe you establish a percentage, um, or maybe we, we change, you know, anything over 30%, excuse me, of our fund, um, and then whatever is remaining then goes into this capital improvement fund so that in the next fiscal year or during budget planning, we've got cash in hand, or, or what they refer to as pay-as-you-go, so you're not taking out debt because you have that cash on hand, that you can use to fund those projects in your community that need to be built or rebuilt or reinvested in. Uh, so it's just one way for us to start thinking forward about how do we fund these significant projects that are forthcoming? Um, and, and this could be an option. Now, just as in this year, there might not be any savings one year, or one year we might have a lot of savings, just depending on what's happening in the environment, or if there was a, a bad storm, or, um, different things will change that. But, um, no matter what, to Gus's point, what, what council would, what we would want to do is evaluate what is in the budget, what is in that capital investment plan every year? So, we make sure that we are using those pay-as-you-go funds wisely and we are spending them in the right areas, and it by no means is a, is a slush fund or a, a fund that, or mandated to spend, but yet we have it available to use, um, and invest, reinvest in our community.
Well, and I think, I think council took a big step this year in the fact that if everything goes according to plan with, with this current fiscal year, you're going to have, you could have up to $250,000 in a fund that the city's never had before, in that capital improvements fund. So, I mean, as, my opinion, uh, maybe it's, some look at it as a small win, I look at it as a huge, and that, that's a giant step in the right direction. I mean, to go from not even thinking that way, you know, from, from a council perspective to by year's end, you could have, you know, well over $200,000 in that capital improvements fund to start identifying those projects and which ones are, are most important to start picking off, I think is a huge step. Um, and I think, um, Ms. Dash, uh, I think you brought up a couple of good points is th-this, maybe this is just an, an ongoing thing and we set it as a policy that at, at this particular council meeting, you're on an annual basis, we're looking at, you know, a, any funds. Uh, realistically, I think you could do, and as long as we keep the 25%, as long as it keeps up, yeah, it continues to grow, anything over that? Um, I mean, yeah, again, I can say this because our finance director's not here, I think it should go to a capital improvements fund, but again, that's just my opinion. Um, he would like to have 50% or 60% in there. Uh, so, it's, it, it really could just be a year-by-year, because you're right, you never know when, what year are we going to have that 2011 storm where it cost us $90,000 to clean up the city, you know, after, after a big severe storm like that, so.
Ryan, you have any comments?
No, just the fact that, a, as Alicia mentioned, um, that fund isn't required to be spent by the end of the following year, correct?
Correct.
The funds roll over, they stay in there, it's not earmarked for anything, so.
So, what we're talking about here is we have, we make a budget every year, we, we have our expectations of what kind of funds are coming in, and then our expectations of what we're going to have to pay out. And at the end of the year, maybe something happened that we didn't foresee and we've got, somehow we got extra money left over, maybe something wasn't expensive or we repaired it versus bought it, or something like that, that would give us these extra monies. What we're discussing is what are we going to do with that extra money we have? We could roll it over into the next year, or, or, you know, we can do all kinds of things. But I think if, if, unless you guys want to really do something about it today, I just think we, we discuss it, you know, between ourselves for the next month, you don't need anything today, right?
No.
And, and let the public have some input, maybe you guys want to contact us and say, what, what do you guys want to do with it? But I'd always like to get some public input.
As fast as y'all want to, so.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and we can bring it up again next month or the month after that, just, uh, and get input from the public. Okay? Okay? End, end of discussion?
Works for me.
Okay. Let's go with the city managers' report. Item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to give a big congratulations to Officer Donahue and his wife. They've added to our Tika Kay family and welcomed Robert Stephen Billy Donahue into the world. Um, when Officer Donahue catches up on his sleep in another few months and you see him around, be sure to congratulate him. I do want to note, his first two names, Robert Stephen, and Chief Parker is actually Stephen Roberts, so I'm not sure if there's a promotion coming up for this or, or what, but, uh, congratulations to the Donahues on their new addition. Um, city hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday, uh, November 22nd and 23rd, uh, for Thanksgiving. As a reminder, if you have, uh, and this is for the public that is either here or playing along, along at home, uh, if you have a utility-related emergency, call 548-3514, uh, we will have staff on call. Uh, for all other emergencies, call 911. And just remember, posting your emergency on social media is probably going to cause a delay in the response. Reach out, get ahold of us, uh, we'd be glad to serve. Starting on Monday, November 26th, Santa's Magic Mailbox is going to return to city hall. Kids will have until December the 7th. Uh, so that's November 26th, next Monday, until December 7th, to get your letters in, uh, into Santa. Put them in that mailbox, it'll be in the front lobby of city hall. Uh, big shout-out to the, uh, to the jolly old elf and his wonderful, uh, helpers for making this happen every year. The mailbox is going to disappear on the 7th, can't stress that enough. So, if you want to get a response back from Santa, get your letter in by then. Um, the city is going to be hosting its annual tree lighting on, uh, Saturday, September 1st. That's going to be at s-
December.
December 1st, at 6:00 PM up at the pavilion, followed by, um, a visit from Santa Claus, uh, right across the hall here in the, uh, lower level of the Glennon Center. Um, there's also going to be the tile painting for the All Play Together Group fundraiser for the, uh, inclusive playground. So, if you and your family haven't had a chance to do that, uh, you'll be able to do so while you're having, uh, hot chocolate from the fire department, enjoy some cookies, uh, you'll get a chance to, uh, paint a tile, and those are $50 each, uh, with proceeds going to the, uh, inclusive playground. It's going to be a busy month. Uh, TK Police Department hosting their 13th annual guided light tour, uh, decorated homes, and that's going to be on Thursday, December 6th. Um, if you've gone full Griswold with your exterior illuminations, email Sergeant Burns, uh, Sburns@tkksc.gov. Let him know you'd like to be on the tour. Tour is free. We are doing, uh, Toys for Happiness collection, so feel free to bring a, uh, use, a, excuse me, new, unused, uh, unwrapped toy and drop it off. Uh, love to get that to, uh, underprivileged kids. Either before you go on the tour or after you return, be sure to go up to the Shore Club for dinner, uh, for the All Play Together Charity Night. 15% of, 15% of all the proceeds from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM that night will go towards the new inclusive playground, uh, that we're building at Trailhead Park. If you don't have time for dinner, go by the bar, see our celebrity bartenders, they're sitting up here before you tonight. Uh, tips that they earn will go towards the, uh, again, towards that same cause, the all-inclusive playground. So, um, long story short, December 6th, if you're not sure what you're supposed to be doing, come up here. Lots of activities going on, so we'd love to see everybody in the community come out for that big night. Uh, Friday, December 14th, um, staff will be holding our holiday, our annual holiday luncheon, uh, upstairs in the Glennon Center, so city hall will be closed during that lunch hour, uh, so that all of our, uh, employees can participate. Almost finished. December 22nd, we'll remind you about this one at the next council meeting as well. Uh, Santa's going to make his last visit to Tika Kay before heading back to the North Pole. Our fire department's gracious enough to once again, uh, usher him around town. There's a lot of streets, there's a lot of kids, please be patient, they're going to start at 8:00 AM, and he's not headed back to the North Pole until he comes around, uh, every cul-de-sac. So, uh, appreciate the fire department for helping out with that. Um, let's see, oh. If all that wasn't enough, there is one more very important event, maybe the most important event in the state that is occurring, uh, that I'd be remiss if I failed to mission, uh, failed to mention. This annual event began in 1896, and it has, uh, it has been renewed every year since. Uh, this Saturday, the Tigers at Clemson University will take on the chickens from that other school down in Columbia, and we look to improve our record to 70 and 42 will get them. Go Tigers.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Any questions of the city manager?
All right, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with former Marine Ryan Richard.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Um, this time of year, the holiday season is one of those times that makes you realize how awesome it is to live in Tika Kay. The city staff, um, police department, fire department do so much to make it special for everyone, so you guys ensure to enjoy that. I don't have a whole lot. Happy Thanksgiving, enjoy your time off, time with your family. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alicia, you're next.
Uh, thanks. I would like to recognize a very special guest that's in the audience. Uh, my father, uh, Dave Davison is sitting out there, and this is his first Tika Kay City Council meeting, and so, uh, just wanted to thank him for coming and point him out, and, um, he's a great guy and I love you, Dad, so thanks for being here. Um, I want to add to what Ryan said, I'm just so thankful to be living here in such a great city. You summed it up so well. It's a great place to be and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, I think Charlie mentioned the other events, and, um, I'll just, uh, again, extend thanks to Hydro Hot Tubbs and Pools and Muscle Factory because Camp Cadet is a amazing program and Pools and Muscle Factory because Camp Cadet is an amazing program and has had such a positive impact on our community. So we appreciate the sponsorship and making sure that that program remains successful. So thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Gus?
You have anything to say?
Yep. First off, everybody, please remember what Thanksgiving this week is all about, not just mass quantities of food and football, but we do all have an awful lot to be thankful for. So have a safe holiday and enjoy the time you spend with your family. As Charlie mentioned, looking forward to Arbor Day celebration, and we are, trees will be planted in honor of Bob Brundy and John Dravay, two people who've meant an awful lot to this city that we all love so much. The day before that, on the sixth, please come out to the Shore Club. John is donating fifteen percent of the proceeds for everything he serves to the All Play Together Foundation, and we're all going to be bartending and we're all donating our tips. So come have a cocktail for a cause.
A cocktail for a cause.
The last thing I would like to say is, I was talking to Charlie about Heather's idea with the flags and, at the crosswalks, and Charlie has volunteered to pay for said flags as long as they're Clemson flags. So it's just something to think about, just something to think about.
Well, when you go forth, and everybody steals your thunder, because we've all pretty much said the same thing, but I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy this time with your family, your friends, your neighbors. It's a great place to live. Just two events in December that I want to highlight was the Christmas tree lighting on the first, and then, as Gus mentioned, the Shore Club and All Play Together charity event. My husband has told me that I'm a heavy pour, so you can come see me and I'll hook you up.
Literally. Alright, thank you. Anything else? Charlie, we used to do, since I was on council before, the end-of-year report. Could you ask staff to put something together? We used to say what we accomplished this year. This is, December will be our year, and one year is this new council altogether, and.
Yes, sir.
We are working on that to have it ready for you for the December council meeting. Very good. This has been the fastest year of my life. It just seems like a year ago we were up here all. Another thing, I've received a couple of emails lately that I just wanted to comment, and I don't know how many people actually see, watch a certain thing, but if you have a house, if you live in a house and there's empty lots around you, and you're used to them being empty lots, that doesn't necessarily mean there are always going to be empty lots. The people who own that land can build on it or sell it. So I've had a couple of emails that said they're, they bought the house thinking that the land next to them was going to stay empty forever. And I thought, really? But I just wanted, we can't do anything about it. The landowner, if it's, if it's zoned for a house or a residential property, they can build a house whenever they want, and the deer have to go live somewhere else. And I know for some people, they love the deer going someplace else. But people who say, I like the birds and the trees and all that, you should have bought the land when it was available for yourself. I don't know any other way to put it, but people who own the land can do with it whatever they feel like doing with it, if it's just a single lot. I hope that makes sense. Other than that, if you have unserviceable flags, please don't throw them away in the trash. Put them in one of these bins. We now have a bin on each side. We got one right out here and on the other side. We also service a flag company that sells flags. They bring us all their unserviceable flags when people come in and they want to buy a new flag. They trade it in for a new flag, and they put them all in a plastic bag and bring them over to us. And we dispose of it properly with proper, proper dignified rendering. So veterans do that. Other than that, I see the next thing on the list is we have to go into executive session to talk about a discussion of contractual matters related to the game on development, discussion regarding contractual matters relating to utility service for courtyards, and then some personnel matters. Are there any questions or comments before we close? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to exit to the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. Please signify by voting aye if you're for it. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Thank you very much. We're in executive session.